We're having trouble with our WebEx connection. So if there are people out there in the Internet that are trying to get in, there's some sort of a technical glitch on our end, and we're trying to get our IT people to get that resolved. So we apologize sincerely for anybody who was hoping to participate in the meeting remotely. Right this moment, it doesn't look like that's happening, or not yet, anyway. And with that, there's too much paper up here tonight, kids. We will call to order the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, April 26, 2022. And if the clerk would call the roll, please.
Council members Rodriguez.
Here.
Aquino.
Here.
Challem Charlaugh.
Here.
Kozlowski.
Here.
And Howell.
Here. And with that, if you will all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any agenda update? I think we have some additional information on Item 8 that was provided to the council members, and I'm assuming a copy was left on the back table.
Just the one provided to all council, and copies at the back for the public.
Okay. And we will start with business from the floor. That is the opportunity to speak to the council on items that are not on the agenda. And we only have one request to speak, and that's from Jack Henry.
Good evening, Mayor. Vice Mayor and council members, I would like to talk to you about the Placerville and Sacramento Valley Railroad. As you may already know, the PSVRR volunteers have been dedicated to this railroad for over 20 years with the express goal of saving the historic rail corridor and creating a top-notch excursion rail operation. Prior to the removal of the railroad tracks by the Russell Ranch developers to install three at-grade crossings, and then the COVID pandemic, the railroad had significant operating revenues with a yearly increase in revenues of approximately 20% each year. This revenue stream allowed the PSVRR to purchase a 60-ton, full-size locomotive, as well as other necessary equipment. Now today, the PSVRR has voluntarily shut down because of the controversy surrounding the three at-grade crossings and ballast issues. It's my understanding that the Russell Ranch developers are collecting fees to mitigate the at-grade crossing problem, but have no plans to schedule or prioritize any installation of equipment at these crossings. There also seems to be a misunderstanding about ballast. Your staff has said that it would cost the PSVRR $200,000 for ballast. Not true. The PSVRR has had several tons of ballast donated and delivered to the railroad tracks for a nominal delivery cost, and there's more to come. The reason I bring this matter up to you is not to slam anyone, but to point out to you the importance of resolving these issues now, not next week or next month, and the importance of having a viable excursion railroad associated with the city of Folsom. Let me give you a brief definition of a tourist destination. Quote, "A tourist destination town is a town in which visitors can spend an overnight and in which a variety of activities and experiences are offered." So what that means is the more variety that Folsom offers to tourists, the more tourists will come to Folsom. Let me give you an example. Fort Bragg is considered a tourist destination. They have the beaches, redwoods nearby, and the Skunk Train. The Skunk Train was started by a group of local citizen investors who saw the potential of an excursion train to bring more tourists to Fort Bragg. I have given all of you a copy of a survey done by two independent groups covering the years 2016 and 2021. The Visit Mendocino County and the Mendocino Railway Survey both agreed with each other on the economic impact that the Skunk Train has had on Fort Bragg's economy. The one fact that should grab your attention is the $67.6 million generated for the local economy during that timeframe by the train.
Jack, I'm going to need you to wrap up, and I'm going to make a further request. We've got another big agenda item, and we typically only provide three minutes. I'm going to request that you contact me, or you and the rest of the guys contact me directly. This is more an issue for the Rail JPA. And as you know, I'm chair of that. And I'm happy to set up a meeting with you guys, myself, Mark, and anybody else that needs to be in that discussion.
Okay, very good.
All right, thank you. We have no more requests to speak from business from the floors. Or anybody else that would like to speak to us about any items that are not on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing no one coming forward, we'll start with our, we'll move to our scheduled presentation. The first one is a resolution of commendation honoring Tubi Glass for receiving the 2021 Folsom Arts Achievement Award. And I understand that's going to be Maribel Wyatt from the Arts and Cultural Commission, Kate Bezdek, hopefully I pronounce that right, Erin Bezdek, and Ash Cosse, the owners of Tubi Glass. She'll meet me down front. Welcome, guys. So this is a resolution of commendation honoring Tubi Glass receiving the 2021 Folsom Arts Achievement Award. Whereas the Art Achievement Award is presented to recognize and honor Tubi Glass, and whereas since 2018, Tubi Glass has partnered with the Folsom Parks and Rec Department to host the two-day Folsom Glass Pumpkin Patch held in October at the Folsom Art and Senior Center. And whereas the event has annually drawn thousands of attendees and displays dozens of Northern California glass art studios contributing over 5,000 unique glass art sculptures. And whereas the citizens' relationship with Tubi Glass is a great example of a successful public-private partnership where responsibilities and revenue are shared proportionately. And whereas this event continues to grow in popularity each year as a unique artistic offering in our region. And whereas Tubi Glass is recognized for their dedication to the arts and for their outstanding generosity of the Folsom Arts Center. Now therefore, I, Kerry Howell, Mayor of the City of Folsom, on behalf of the Folsom City Council, Folsom Arts and Cultural Commission, and the Folsom community, hereby extend commendations in the highest regard to Tubi Glass for receiving the 2021 Folsom Arts Achievement Award, passed and approved this 26th day of April, 2022.
Thank you.
You guys actually got a lot of play on media that days leading up to that on June 13. So that was cool. June 31, though.
Thank you.
Did you guys want to say anything?
Oh, sure.
No, trying, trying.
And if anybody hasn't been to that event, I encourage you to go to it. The pieces of art are absolutely gorgeous, and it's just before Halloween.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it very much. It's a great event, and we have a lot of fun doing it.
Okay, and our next scheduled presentation has been unfortunately unscheduled because I think that the speaker, who is going to plan to do this remotely, is not able to get into the meeting. So that will move us on to our next item, which is the Consent Calendar.
I'll move Items 3 through 6 unless someone wants to pull one.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk will call the roll, please.
Commissioners Rodriguez.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
Challem Charlaugh.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
And Howell.
Yes. Which moves us on to new business, Item 7. If the clerk will announce that item.
New business, Item 7 is Ordinance Number 1326, an uncodified ordinance of the City of Folsom approving the Folsom Police Department's military equipment use policy in compliance with Assembly Bill 481, introduction and first reading.
Ready? All right. Good evening. For those who don't know me, I'm Brian Lockhart. I'm a lieutenant over at the Police Department. Our office, along with the Attorney's Office and the Clerk's Office, have put a lot of hours into this to bring it to where we are today. So I'm going to spend some time and try to my best at explaining what Assembly Bill 481 is all about. So in September of 2021, Governor Newsom signed this bill to address the funding, acquisition, and use of military equipment. The goal of this bill was to increase the transparency, accountability, and oversight of this military-type equipment. I'll get into what this military equipment actually is in a minute. You guys, the council, must approve this funding, use, and acquisition by ordinance. And it also, there's a lot of things that this bill has attached to it, such as an annual report that we have to submit once a year regarding the use, how many times we've used these certain, these things that we have. And also to create a public forum, which we did about a month ago. And I will explain that in a minute as well. So the initial approval and annual reporting, the governing body must approve the things by May 21, or I'm sorry, May 1, 2022. That is when the approval process must start. So we're here, the process is starting today. The thing that's different about this is we have to have things approved that we already have. So back in 2016, for example, the council approved the Bearcat, which we already have. It needs to be, all the things that we possess now need to be approved again for us to use them. And if the council does not approve these items, we have to cease the use of them within 180 days of that happening. I've listed here the annual report on some of the things that they have to have in them. They have to be publicly available on the website. And then, again, it has to talk about how we use them, the maintenance, the cost to use them, internal audits. And there has to be a community complaint way that people can talk about or concerns they have about the use of this military-type equipment, which I'll get into in a minute. So we'll talk a little bit about what this military equipment is. So when we first, at least when I hear "military equipment," these are the items that I think about as military equipment, right? We have no, the Police Department has no surplus military equipment. Which are these things? We don't have a grenade launcher down at the bottom. We don't have a Humvee. We don't have tanks. We don't have any of this stuff. What you'll find out is a lot of this equipment is standard law enforcement equipment that we've had for years that everyone across the country has as well.
But it somehow, during the signing of this bill, got its name changed to "military equipment" as opposed to stuff that law enforcement has used forever.
Correct. And I'm going to show you.
The most, the biggest example being tear gas. I was, I started laughing when I saw that.
Yeah. And a lot of it's up to interpretation. We went on the safe route, the Attorney's Office, and I went on the safe route. And if there was something that just vaguely fit a category, we included it in the report. So here's those categories that we talked about. I'm not going to go through each one of them, but our Police Department currently has eight of those 15 categories. But for example, you go down to equipment category 13, taser, shockwave, microwave weapons, water cannons. We have none of that. We have a long-range acoustical device, which is, it sits on top of our Bearcat, and it's a way to project sound out when we get to a place we want to give announcements. Specialized firearms that are identified as assault ones, that's a typical patrol rifle that all of our officers have when they're out on the street. Category 5, a command and control vehicle. You guys have seen, I'm sure a lot of you have seen our, it looks like a motorhome. It's our command and control vehicle.
And don't we share the use of that with other agencies in the region?
We do. We specifically share that command and control vehicle. We share the Bearcat a lot with other agencies because a lot of times we see that in a tactical-type event, you need as many people as you can possibly get. Again, so here's a few of our things. These aren't all of our things. This is just kind of a summary of a few different things. On the top left, that's what we call a flashbang or a diversionary device. That's used to, it makes a big boon to distract someone to something else when we're trying to do something else, if that makes any sense. Top right is our command and control vehicle. That gives us the ability to have a place to convene that we can put dispatchers in. There's whiteboards in there. I'm sure a lot of you have even seen the inside of it. We use that a lot regionally because we have one of the nicest ones in the region. The Bearcat picture there on the bottom left with some of our future officers there, and then also the drones. We have a total of 11 drones now, and things are really moving into a drone. They're used a lot. In fact, just last night, we, there was an incident that happened in Rancho Cordova that we helped them out. And we have one that has a FLIR device on it, which can detect heat. And our drone was able to find the person that ran from the car. And actually, the Bearcat, if you had, if anyone had heard about the incident that happened, and there was a shooting in Sacramento, and the car made its way up here, our Bearcat was out there on that because at the time it was thought that the person was still in the car on the freeway. So we use it, we use it very regularly. There's a few other items. The bottom left is a less-lethal shotgun, which shoots, which most of us know as a beanbag-type gun. We call it a less-lethal device. The one on the bottom right is also another less-lethal projectile launcher. The top left is a gas munition launcher, tear gas, like you said. And then that's a SWAT rifle on there on the top right. But we have a total of 60 of those, and we're trying to outfit everyone so every officer can have one because it's been proven time and time again that these large incidents, such as active shooter situations and such, these are the best things to have for long-range shots and whatnot. So as part of this bill, we had to go through every single item we have. And I think it was about 30 pages long of the things that we have. But this is what each of the items have. And the bill tells us that we have to have each of these things. It has to have a description, how many we have, what its capabilities are, the lifespan, manufacturer's description, the purpose, authorized usage, costs, required training, and the authority for use. So we have this for every single item. This is already on our website. It was posted about 30 days ago. We have this posted up there, along with AB41 info, along with our draft policy that we're seeking to get approved.
Do all officers get trained on it? Are there specific officers?
So it depends. And I have a slide on that later that I'll touch on. But it just depends on what it is. But yes, all officers are trained before they use a particular item. For example, like we were talking about earlier, like tear gas. The regular officer would not be able to pick up tear gas and do it. You have to be specially trained to use that.
Thank you.
So military equipment use and needs. What do we use it for? We use it to safely resolve volatile situations with which otherwise might rise to the level of physical force encounter. These are critical incidents. These are planned events. And what we're trying to do with a lot of these things is be prepared. As a city, we need to be prepared for that worst-case scenario. And if we don't have some of these items, we will absolutely not be prepared for one of these worst-case scenarios. Why do we need it? It's necessary because there's no other reasonable alternative to, we need an armored personnel carrier. We have to have that. There's no other reasonable alternative to that, along with a lot of the other things. Part of the bill as well tells us that we need to safeguard the public's welfare, safety, civil rights, and civil liberties. These items actually allow us to do that. And again, as it goes along with preparedness is having as many options available to us to safely resolve something. And this touches on your training. All of our officers attend about 80 hours of training. And that's just a bare minimum of training that we do on all kinds of different topics. Now, some of these things, as we discussed, such as the tear gas or the less-lethal, the beanbag shotgun, they have to go to a, say, a six-hour course. I don't know the exact hours, but they have to go to an actual course for each one of these items. And we're bound by these, by our policies, by the laws, and by post, police officer standards and trainings. And as well, we have our own sort of operational procedures on how we deal with certain incidents.
So then is it fair to say that, because you're right, anything can happen at any time. Does that mean that there is always somebody trained with this on every shift?
Yeah, so for example, this last year, we do, we normally do a yearly active shooter training. And this year, we trained every single officer in the entire department to be able to drive the Bearcat. So the idea was, and it just happened, it happens all the time, but as a good example, last week, an officer took that out there to the scene that had been previously trained on it, and it was just, it was seamless. And that's the goal of it, to, like you said, to have everyone there.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
So approval. We're seeking the approval of the Military Equipment Use Policy, FPD 707. And this will allow us the continued use of the things we already have. At this point, I think, I have it on a further slide, we're not seeking approval for anything else. We're not trying to acquire anything at this point. If we do, if, say, we want to acquire something that would put us, that falls into that category, we have to come back here, have you guys approve the acquisition and the funding of it before we can get it. So again, to touch on the funding, there's no financial impact of this right now other than the tremendous amount of hours that we've all put into this. Everything's owned by the Police Department right now. And again, all the future must be approved. Here's a quick timeline. On March 25, we posted all of the stuff on our website. On the 31st, we had a community event at the Police Department. It was very well received and supported by everyone that attended. And here we are today at 4:26. Part of the, of AB41 says that we have to have a process in place to be able to field complaints, concerns, or anything that anyone may have with AB41 or us having this equipment. We already have this in place. It's part of our policy and procedures. There's a number of different ways. You can call, you can email, you can fill out a form online to be able to submit any kind of complaint. And that QR code doesn't really do much up there for anybody to scan, but it's, that will link you to the website. And that's a, in 2019, the Bearcat won the loudest applause at the hometown parade.
That's awesome.
That's all I have. It's a real complicated sort of a bill, but I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
It's almost as if the state legislature wants us to forcibly advertise whatever our secret weapons are so that all the criminals are aware of what they might run into in Folsom.
Yeah. That's what I, and I think that by calling it "military equipment," everyone thinks that we have grenade launchers and all these things that are sitting behind the secret walls of the Police Department. It's certainly not the case.
No, the only complaint I've ever heard is that, you know, when we got the Bearcat, a lot of people said, "What the heck do we need a Bearcat for?"
Yeah.
Because most school-age kids in Folsom have actually been in the Bearcat.
Yeah, they love it.
Yeah.
That's how you get to the starting line of the marathon when you're the mayor.
No, I just went in the police car. Any questions?
My only comment, I think I'm with Mayor Howell, you know, why we have to disclose this to all public. I know, yes, we are going to be safe. But this is a perfect opportunity to tell all our residents our strength and our police force strength. We are safe here. Thank you so much.
So, and I'm just going to guess that the criminals that are likely to wind up in Folsom are probably not watching this meeting.
Probably not. It was funny. I told one of the ladies that showed up, I said, you know, it's all about being prepared. We've always been prepared, and we weren't necessarily hiding anything. But why would we want to display all of these things that we have? We're happy to share it with you if you want to see, which a lot of you and a lot of these people out here have probably seen. But now it's there.
Because we're the people that go to National Night Out, and the criminals don't usually go.
Lieutenant, question for you. Are there, are there things out there at other agencies that this was more targeting? Things that are kind of off the beaten path that some other police forces have?
I don't think there's any tanks in this region, but there might be another part of the country.
There's not. There's a couple, if I go back to these things. An agency in our region has one of those ones on the top right. And then some of the other categories are some explosive breaching things. Some other places in the region have that as well. We don't have that. But yeah, and this covers, like, police robots and, I mean, it covers almost everything.
It's an expansive list, yeah, for sure.
And we do have a robot, people.
We do.
Yeah. Well, thank you for being prepared.
Sure.
Do you need a motion?
No other questions? Yeah, we do need a motion.
I'll move to approve ordinance Number 1326.
I second. We have a motion and a second. Call the roll, please.
I just wanted to, there was nobody from the public signed up to speak on this, correct?
No.
Okay.
Is there anybody in the public that would like to ask any questions? Don't all run down at once. Okay, all good. Take a bow. Okay, and I'm sorry to have to do this, but because of this technical glitch, we are going to take a 15-minute break. I know you guys.
Kerry, we didn't vote, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Call the roll, please.
Council members Rodriguez.
Yes.
Aquino.
Yes.
Challem Charlaugh.
Yes.
Kozlowski.
Yes.
And Howell.
Yes. And again, unfortunately, we're going to have to take about 15 minutes so that we can try to reboot this meeting so that the people that are trying to get in from outside the building can get in. Please just keep your fingers crossed, and we'll see everybody back here at 7:13. Okay, we will reconvene the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council. And before we move on to Agenda Item Number 8, the next best resolution to our technical glitch with regard to people that are trying to get, excuse me, into this meeting via the WebEx link, the new meeting number is 255-5696-0273. All of the other information, the meeting password, and all of that is the same. So for anybody who's out there watching the live feed that's trying to get onto the WebEx, feel free to give that a shot, and that should be working.
Could we repeat that number one more time, for a while?
The meeting number, 2555-696-0273. And the meeting password is the same, which is basically today's date. So, and because of that, we are likely not going to be making a final decision tonight because we have to open the public hearing. We have to let all of you folks speak that are here. We'll let anybody that is able to access the meeting from outside speak. And because we ended up having to change the meeting number, we want to ensure that anybody that was hoping to participate that was unable to get in, or maybe got off the call, we'll give them an opportunity at the next council meeting. So that's likely what's going to happen tonight. So our sincere apologies for the technical glitch, but I think we've all had computer issues at some point or another. And unfortunately, the City of Folsoms was today. So with that, we are going to, we've got 20, I think, 21 requests to speak tonight. So we are going to stick to the three-minute rule. The clerk will announce your name. She'll give a couple of names ahead. So if you could get up from your seat and be ready to come down when it's your turn to come to the microphone, that would be greatly appreciated. And I just want to assure you that we have all read all the emails. We've read the staff reports. We know what happened at the Historic District Commission meeting. We know what happened at the Planning Commission meeting. So feel free, if you've got additional information that you want to impart to us, that's great. But just assume that we have, in fact, read all of the communications that you and your family members were, had submitted to us.
Just a point of order before we go forward. If people in the audience have submitted a speaker card and come up and speak tonight, are they going to get a second bite of the apple at the next meeting? Or can they defer until the next meeting?
My preference would be that if people have something to say tonight, that they say it tonight. And in fact, I think we'll keep these cards. So tonight is your opportunity for the people that are in the room because I don't think that any of us wants to spend another two hours at the next meeting hearing the same thing over again. So we appreciate your patience and apologize for this glitch because we really hope that this appeal process would ultimately get resolved this evening. That doesn't appear to be the case.
Thank you. That's part of it. But if somebody were to withdraw their speaker card, they could then theoretically speak at the next meeting? Or the continuation of this meeting, I should say?
If anybody would like to do that, yes.
Okay, all right. Just so everybody knows their options.
Okay, so.
Can I contest, is it possible not to extend it? I mean, how is it going to be extended?
We can't do, we don't feel, our legal staff has advised us against that because there may be people that thought that they were going to be able to participate in this meeting remotely, and we don't want to deny them the opportunity to be able to participate. And we don't know how many, because we couldn't get into the meeting ourselves, we don't know how long a queue of people there were that were out there that wanted to speak on this item. So we're just doing it out of an abundance of caution so that if there are people that would like to speak on this subject, that they're given the opportunity to do so. Okay, so with that, we will move to Item Eight. If the clerk would like to introduce that item.
Public hearing, Item Number Eight is an appeal by Igor Semenjak of a decision by the Historic District Commission denying a conditional use permit for the Lakeside Memorial Lawn Crematorium Project located at 1201 Forest Street.
Okay, give me one second so I can get to the right page here. Okay, so, do we have, okay. Do we have a presentation by staff?
Yes.
Okay.
Mayor Howell, just for the record.
So we're going to open the hearing on the appeal, and we're going to start with city staff making a presentation to the council. Then the appellant will be given the opportunity to make a presentation to the council with a time limit of 10 minutes. The members of the public will then be given three minutes to address the council, and that's three minutes per person, and a maximum of three minutes per person. Then the appellant will be allowed five minutes to make any closing remarks to the council. And then staff will respond to questions from the council. And we had planned at that point to close the appeal hearing, and that's where we run into the difficulty. So this is going to extend to the next meeting.
And Mayor Howell, I think Councilmember Chalencerra has a brief announcement.
Okay.
Mayor Howell, and just want to, for the record purpose, I just want to make sure, since last spring, I have been meeting with the residents as well as the applicant as well, just to hear their views. But after they submit the appeal, then I stopped. I just want to put that out there. For my knowledge, I met the both sides of the community members. Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening. All right, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Josh Kincaid. I am an associate planner with the city's Community Development Department. There we go. Tonight, I will be presenting the appeal by Igor Semenjak of the Historic District Commission's denial of the Lakeside Memorial Lawn Crematory Conditional Use Permit. So the project is located on the Lakeside Memorial Lawn Cemetery, which is located within the open space public area of the historic district. It is adjacent to the Preserve subdivision, also known as Lake Matoma Shores to the north, mining tailings and Folsom Boulevard to the east, the Chungwa Cemetery to the south, and the Folsom Lake State Recreation Area, the American River Bike Trail, and the American River itself to the west. The area outlined in yellow here represents the property lines for the Lakeside Memorial Lawn, and the small area in red is the location of the structure in which the crematorium facility is proposed. Structure is located approximately 450 feet from the nearest residential uses. The cemetery was first proposed in this building, excuse me, a crematory, was first proposed in this building in 2002. Staff prepared an initial study and recommended denial of the conditional use permit at that point, but the applicant withdrew the application before the Historic District Commission could weigh in. The applicant applied in 2019 for a conditional use permit from the Historic District Commission to operate a crematory facility inside an existing metal structure within the fence maintenance area of the cemetery. So outside of the single exhaust stack located above the roofline of the structure, the only site modifications would be for two 250-gallon propane tanks on a pad next to the structure. The applicant proposes up to four cremations per day and no more than 500 per year. Now briefly looking at the site plan, here we see that there are two structures in the maintenance area. The rectangular structure that has been around since the 90s is where the crematorium is proposed, and the larger square storage shed was recently constructed and is not associated with this project. And here we have some manufacturer specifications of the cremator with an exhaust stack and rain cap. Staff notes that this is for schematic purposes only and doesn't necessarily represent the ultimate height of the stack. Now for some of the major factors studied. So in the staff report, we looked at multiple areas of potential concern. Here are the major ones. For zoning, cemeteries are allowed in this zone with the issuance of a conditional use permit. And staff considered the proposed crematory to be an accessory use to the cemetery operations given the fact that it would be operated ancillary to the existing cemetery and ran by the same group that owns the cemetery. Staff also found that there were several crematoriums in Sacramento County operating ancillary to cemeteries and to funeral homes. So it was common to have a crematorium operating ancillary to a main use. Staff had an initial study prepared that included a full project-specific air quality and greenhouse gas analysis done by technical professionals in consultation with the Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District. That analysis found that the operational emissions and the community incremental excess in cancer, chronic, and acute health risks were shown to not exceed the air district's daily or annual thresholds based on the location of the residences and the technology of the cremator. Staff notes that the project would also be subject to future permitting, regular reporting, and annual inspections from the air district. For fire and life safety, the initial study confirmed the impacts would be less than significant from a sequoist standpoint, and the fire chief verified that the current access is adequate and that the stack and propane tanks do not result in substantial elevated fire risks. Now looking at the visual impacts, here's a view of the tailings, the mining tailings, and the project site from the right. This is about the only area outside of the project site itself that staff could find where the structure is clearly visible. Here we see a view of the metal structure where the crematory is proposed. You can see that there's a wooden fence surrounding the area where the propane tanks are proposed, so the tanks are not anticipated to be visible outside of the maintenance area. And here we have a view of that maintenance area from the edge of the cemetery closest to the Preserve subdivision. As shown here, the existing tree canopy mostly shields the maintenance area itself from the subdivision, and inclusion of the new stack on top of the building would not significantly alter this view. Staff originally concluded through consultation with the contracted archaeologists that the visibility of the proposed stack does not have a direct effect on the historical significance of the historic cemeteries from a sequoist perspective, especially as there's no ash spread to these cultural resources. And finally, looking at cultural resources, I'm going to get into a little bit more detail here as this is what the commission based their finding of denial on. The Lakeside Cemetery includes the Oddfellows and Mason Cemeteries and the adjacent, and the adjacent Chungwa Cemetery and the Dredge Mining Tailings, which are all pictured here. All appear on the city's Cultural Resources Inventory. And Chungwa and Lakeside appear on Historic County Cemetery inventories as well. Here we see the tailings, the entrance to the Chinese Cemetery, and the view of the Lakeside Cemetery from the maintenance area. Staff had a cultural resources inventory prepared by registered archaeologists at ECorp due to the cultural sensitivity of this area. The qualities that make the historic cemetery significant are the aspects of integrity of the settings, feeling, and association. And that's according to the National Registration Form for Chungwa. And the archaeological consultant concluded that the project would not significantly impact these qualities from a sequoist standpoint. As part of the original 2003 initial study, the Sacramento County Cemetery Advisory Commission sent a letter expressing concern for a crematory to be located in the vicinity of the historical resources described here. Staff recommended approval in 2022, however, in part based on the additional cultural resources and air quality studies performed by experts as part of the new initial study. After publication of the staff report for the Historic District Commission, the Cemetery Commission sent a new letter restating their concerns from 2003. Staff shared these letters, as well as a letter from the Chinese Historical Society of America, with the archaeologist and the environmental consultant, and found that the conclusions of the initial study did not change based on these comments and that the impacts would remain less than significant from a sequoist perspective. Now looking at the public comments, so throughout the life of the project, staff has received or has been forwarded over 140 unique public comments regarding this project and/or the environmental document, all of one, all but one of which expressed concerns or opposition to the project and/or the environmental document.
Sorry to interrupt, but you did say that those were 140 unique public comments. I did see several emails that were basically the exact same email.
Right.
So were those counted as one, or were they counted separately?
If they, if they were, if it was a copy of an email sent to multiple members of the council, let's say.
No, what I'm talking about is the same, it was the exact same wording in the email that was sent out.
From a different individual.
Yes.
Those were counted separately.
Okay.
So, yeah, all but one of which expressed concerns about or opposition to the project. There was also an online petition with over 160 signatures, a hand-signed petition with almost 500 signatures, and over 300 signed form letters, all expressing opposition to the project. Finally, there were 35 speakers at the Historic District Commission hearing opposing the project. Staff read and did attempt to summarize each of the unique points of the public comments in the original staff report. And Helix, the environmental consultant, did prepare a response letter to the general points that were made in several of the letters regarding the environmental impacts. Some of the major issues that were brought up in these letters included air quality, traffic, parking, wildfire, life safety, cultural resources, land use, aesthetics, economic, and psychological concerns. While the commission expressed confidence in the air quality analysis that was from a, from a sequoist perspective, they ultimately had cultural resource concerns that led to their decision to deny. During deliberation, they stated they were not convinced that a crematory was a historically appropriate use, and that the Cemetery Advisory Commission maintained that the crematorium would have a negative impact on the historical significance of the cemetery. Ultimately, the finding for denial of the use permit was made based on the use being detrimental to the general welfare of people in the neighborhood and detrimental to property and the city due to impacts on the historical character of the cemetery and the historical use of the area. The commission denied the conditional use permit 6 to 1. Because it was a denial of the entitlement rather than a sequoist document, a sequoist finding was not made. So after the denial, the applicant did submit a timely appeal of the decision and later submitted supplemental information explaining additional reasons for the appeal. They claimed that the denial was based on the residents' concerns rather than the data in the staff report and the initial study, and that the crematory would not impact the historical character of the cemetery due to it being placed in a modern maintenance area. Staff notes that the commission's denial finding did not cite the initial study specifically, but rather was based on the letters from the Cemetery Commission and the Chinese Historical Society that expressed concern about the impacts to the historical character of the area. So while these letters did not change the staff's sequoist conclusions, they were used as substantial evidence to deny the conditional use permit. The applicant states that there are other historical cemeteries in the region that have crematories. Staff's research indicated that this was not the case, at least for the historic cemeteries within Sacramento County. The applicant brought up issues of property values, which was a subject the public had several concerns about, of course. However, the denial finding was not based on property values directly. Finally, the applicant states that there are not any industrially-zoned areas in Folsom with the neighborhood more than 500 feet away that could accommodate the proposed crematory. Staff found four industrial properties with land that was over 500 feet from residential uses, but their availability and their practicality for what the applicant is proposing is really not known. So with that in mind, I'll turn to the conditional use permit finding. The text here is taken directly from the Folsom Municipal Code section on use permits, and it describes what council would have to find to either approve or deny a conditional use permit. You'll note that it's a bit different than the finding that was made by the Historic District Commission in that it includes some additional language about the use under the circumstances of the particular case and whether the use would be detrimental to not only the health and safety and general welfare but of the peace, morals, and comfort of those in the area as well. It's all directly from the municipal code. Staff believes that while the environmental documentation does not show significant environmental impact from a sequoist perspective, that there's a substantial, there's substantial evidence in the record from the Historic District Commission hearing to show that these findings can be met for denial. So based on the commission's decision and the analysis in the city council staff report, staff is recommending denial of the appeal, again, based on the impacts to cultural resources. We do have several folks here that would be able to answer a variety of questions. We have Fire Chief Ken Casano here to answer any questions about fire danger. Robert Edgerton from Helix is here to field any environmental questions about the analysis in the initial study. We should have Victor Ortiz from Helix on the line to answer any questions about the air quality analysis specifically. And Lisa Westwood from ECorp is also on the line to further assist with questions about cultural resources and the Cultural Resources Inventory report specifically that was, that the initial study used for its analysis. Finally, we have Brian Krebs from the air district, who can answer any questions about the permitting process and the enforcement process. So with that, I can take any questions for staff or the consultants.
And if I could just break in real quick and ask the clerk to re-announce how to access this meeting right now?
Okay, if you look at the first page of your agenda, you will get instructions, and the only thing that has changed is the number. Thank you. The meeting number, which is 2555-696-0273. The phone-in number to dial is 1-415-655-0001.
And that has not changed?
Right, that has not changed, and neither has the meeting password, which is 04262022. Just the meeting number.
Do you have any questions, staff, before we have the appellant come up?
I have one. The 650 signatures that were obtained online or hand-signed petition, these are Folsom residents, Sat County residents? Or how was, how were those signatures verified?
They were not verified. They were submitted to staff as a comment. So staff didn't verify where the signatures came from. Several, several individuals in the petition did provide their address, I believe. That's been redacted from the, from the public version of that, of that comment. But staff does have that information available.
Thank you.
I have one that's probably for the city attorney. Could you go back one slide to the, this right here? So if, is the wording of this, I'm sure it has served us fine for decades, but it seems to me that this is saying that, that you have to be, you would have to find that it is detrimental to the health, safety, peace, morals, comfort, and general welfare. All of those conditions have to apply?
No, that's, that's not the intent of it. This language was taken directly out of the code, but based on our interpretation over the years, as well as case law, looking at cities that have had similar ordinances, similar language to this, it can be any one of those.
So and can be inferred to mean or?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
If there's no other questions?
I have a question.
Okay.
Josh, could you please go back to the first slide that has the map? Nope.
The, yes.
Right there. So where it says 1221, is that the Chungwa Cemetery? Is that it?
Yes.
Who owns that?
I believe that is owned, it's by, it's either state-owned or federally-owned. I know there's a lot of federally-owned and state-owned. I know there's a lot of federally-owned and state-owned property that surrounds, I can't recall specifically if it was federal or state, but it's one of the two.
And Lisa Westwood is on the line? Was that Lisa?
Is Lisa on the line?
You may need to unmute yourself. I can't tell who's on the line for most users, but to unmute, star six.
Well, the question that I would like to ask Lisa, if she's around, and Josh, maybe you know this, somewhere in the pack, and I'm not sure where we got this, if it was from Bob LaPierre at the Sacramento County Cemetery Commission or what, but there is a history of the cemetery that was compiled by somebody named Sue Silver in the late 90s, and I'm wondering if this was available to Lisa when she was doing her cultural resources analysis?
Hi, this is Lisa, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So when we did our analysis, and I apologize, I'm calling from a hotel, so I don't have access to all my files, but when we did our...
You're breaking up, Lisa.
Okay. So when we did our analysis, we did a full record search with the California Historical Resources Information System, and we obtained all relevant documentation and historical documentation for the property that's on file with the Office of Historic Preservation. Whether or not that specific reference was included, I don't know, because I don't have that in front of me.
Okay. Do you know where this came from, Josh?
I believe it was from the original 2003 draft staff report. I, it may have been...
Actually, I don't, I don't believe it was. I believe it was from the application to construct the mausoleums. I think, Pam, you were here then. I believe it was, it was, that document was brought forth when the original application to construct the mausoleums was brought to the Planning Commission, if I remember correctly, in 1996. And why do I know that? Because I was on the Planning Commission in 1996.
Well, I don't think that would be the case, because this document was first published in 1999.
Okay, then, then the mausoleums were before that, so she may have updated it or something afterward, but she was at that meeting. She was at the, there may have been a couple of meetings that we talked about, the mausoleums.
Okay.
Yeah, it may have been initially...
Yeah, the author of that document was here.
All right, okay, thank you.
I have one question. By looking at those two parcels, they look like two different properties.
So the...
1221 and...
Yes, they are two different properties, that's correct.
Right, and the one, and the 1221, yes, it is historic character fully embedded by the Chinese communities and so many other people, but how is that the other property is, we are titling as it's going to change the historic character if they put something on that shed?
Right.
How? Because the historic character is with the 1221, but not the yellow boundaries is the historic character.
So within, within the, the yellow boundary is, is the Lakeside, excuse me, the Lakeside Cemetery where the crematorium is being proposed, and Lakeside is an amalgamation of several cemeteries, some of which are included on the city's cultural resources inventory. So there are, there are cultural resources both onsite and directly offsite.
Okay, so those small boundaries are not there. It is all, you know, amalgam, or the combination of everything.
No, there's fencing, and the Chinese cemetery is actually, there's a barrier between the two of them.
Yeah, no, I'm clear on those two parcels.
Right.
Even I visited.
Yeah, the Chinese cemetery is offsite, based on, you know, these two parcels, but the, the other cemeteries that were, that are considered within the Lakeside Cemetery are, are within the yellow boundary.
Okay, so even though the Chungwa Cemetery is, you know, officially on the National Register and everything, Lakeside Cemetery is...
Actually, just a point of clarification, I don't believe that it is, and that's one of the complaints, that they believe that it's eligible, and I believe that the eligibility has been verified, but I do not believe that it's actually been placed on the National Register.
Okay, thank you. I, I thought like I read it, but thank you, Mayor.
There's a, there's a fine distinction there. Normally, this happens both in the state of California and on the National Register. Once they put you on the list, it pretty much, it's very rare for some, for that not to be achieved, but there's more paperwork that needs to be submitted, and I don't believe that was ever done in this case.
Well, according to this letter from the Chinese Historical Society of America, the Chungwa Cemetery has been placed on the National Register.
That's what I read.
California State Historic places, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Josh, thank you. So the Lakeside itself is a historic character, because it's already included some historic cemeteries in that.
At least on the, on the city's cultural resources inventory, there are elements within Lakeside that, that are on that inventory, correct?
Thank you.
And, sorry, and on the Sacramento County inventory has, has listed Lakeside as a whole on their, their cultural resources as well.
Good. And just for the clarification purpose, Helix report, can you explain a little bit more, you know, who has done that, who authorized to do that? I know, I'm not sure, it is not from city.
Sure.
If you can explain a little bit more for everyone's benefit, thank you.
Sure, so, so the, the city contracts with Helix Environmental, an environmental consulting firm based here in Folsom, and Helix helps prepare the initial study and the mitigated negative declaration. Staff is, is directly in contract with Helix. Helix also used ECorp as a subconsultant for the cultural resources analysis that they provided.
Good, thank you, thank you for the clarification. And also, you quickly ran by the alternate properties. I got it, but I wasn't, it was not clear to me. Could you please explain a little bit more on the alternate properties word you used at the end?
The alternate properties? I'm not, I'm not entirely sure what the question is, if you could clarify?
I think it's relative to the industrial properties that are more than 500 feet from residential.
Appreciate, appreciate. So because it was stated in the appeal that there are no other, that there are no industrial properties that are located within, further than 500 feet away, because a lot of the letters did state, you wouldn't this, this use be more appropriate on an industrial property, either within the city or, or nearby, staff researched the zoning map to see what properties were zoned, M1 and M2, that, that could accommodate that, and in that research, that's where we found that there were four properties that looked like they had land that was within, that was further than 500 feet away, but beyond, beyond knowing that that land exists, you know, the real estate status, the, the idea of a crematory of this size, whether, you know, those lands could accommodate that specific use, that's what staff doesn't know.
Yeah, but we found some.
We, we found, we found some properties that do have land that are, that are further than 500 feet from residential.
Got it, thank you, Josh.
But we don't know who owns that.
Yeah.
And it could already be occupied.
It's in city's boundary under our jurisdiction, that's all you are saying, right?
Right, it's just more, more a point of clarification that, that we were able to, to find that land.
Thank you. Mayor, that's...
I have one final question, or maybe a pair of questions. Can you just clarify, the, the need for the conditional use is tied to the fact that it is a cemetery?
Yes, so in, in the, the open space zoning within 1752, the Historic District section of the code, it states that private cemeteries require a conditional use permit. The cemetery, of course, has been around since the 1800s, does not have a conditional use permit. There are, there is a use permit on file for the, the mausoleums, I believe, from the, from the 90s. So to operate this crematorium, we found that it would have to operate as an ancillary use to the cemetery, and because a cemetery, a private cemetery, does require a conditional use permit, staff found it appropriate to require a conditional use permit for a use associated with the cemetery.
Okay, so then my follow-up question is, what zoning districts would this type of equipment not need an additional approval for?
It's, it's an interesting question, I mean...
Because there could be, for other purposes, kilns, things like that, that might be used in a, any commercial district.
Right. In the commercial land use table really calls out, you know, what uses would be allowed either by right or with a conditional use permit in, in the three commercial, the four commercials zones, C1 through C3 and BP, crematorium aren't, you know, referenced specifically in there. The M1 and M2 zones, they do talk more about kilns and that sort of...
Okay, so are there other zoning designations that would require a conditional use permit for a private cemetery, residential and open space, or just open space?
I know, I mean, definitely in open space, regardless of whether it's in the Historic District or not. We have the two layers of zoning in the Historic District. Outside of the Historic District, the cemeteries, I believe, also require a conditional use permit. Beyond that, I'd have to check the commercial section of the code to see if cemeteries are referenced. I don't believe that they are, but I'd like to check the code just to make sure.
And then that would probably likely be because the cemeteries that exist in Folsom all existed long before the, the city was founded.
So I, I, it's trivia to me where cemeteries require a conditional use. I'm, I'm more concerned with what, are there other places within the rest of our zoning designations where the operation of the crematory would require a special permit or special approval of some kind?
I, I think potentially in the M1 or M2 zones would be the, the places that would handle the most intensive types of commercial and industrial uses, so we'd have to check that section of the code to see whether or not it still says that a conditional use permit is required, or whether it's allowed by right, but we can get you more clarity on that.
So then I, I guess my other, my question, my follow-up is about commercial districts. Is this something that would require a special use or conditional use if it were in one of our commercial districts, not M1 or M2?
I don't, so, thank you, council members.
Sorry to put you on the spot, but...
No, no problem, thank you, council members. Pam Johns, Community Development Director, and Assistant City Attorney and I are looking through the code right now, but the, this is not a use that is specifically listed as something by right or with a CUP in the commercial zones, and then the industrial zones are a lot more general about use types and have a lot of leverage for describing more intense uses and give direction to, or discretion for similar use determinations. So it's generally assumed that in commercial zones, by right or with a conditional use permit, you could have heavier industrial uses that would have impact. So we'd be evaluating that kind of a use in industrial zones and determining whether it would be by right or by conditional use permit, and that is generally a director discretion call. So we'll, I can pull up...
In terms of where, when it hits the threshold of being heavy industrial?
Correct.
Okay, gotcha. All right, thank you.
Mayor, I have one more follow-on. Josh, I think we do have someone from our county cemetery advisory committee, the commission, on the call, or someone. I just want to get some more clarity on their statement. It is the opinion of the commission that the addition of a crematorium on this site would be a negative impact on the historical significance of that area. Its opinion, it's, that statement somewhat for me, little bit vague. There is no more meat to that section, this of the county code and that of this, they cannot put the crematorium. And hence, all those 21 crematoriums has been designated as a historic, as none of them has it. So is there a way we can get some more clarity on the commission opinion?
If there is a member of the Cemetery Advisory Commission on the line, they may be able to go into greater detail. Staff did, did ask for greater detail from the Cemetery Advisory Commission after we, we received that letter. We did want something more concrete as well. The, the commission did meet recently to, to speak about, about Lakeside, but in email correspondence with the president of the commission, I believe the president, the chair possibly, they stated that they weren't able to provide any additional information about the crematory use itself and its impacts.
And basically what the, as I understood that email, it basically said, "We don't have any different opinion than we had in 2002."
Right.
So they didn't provide any detail in 2002, and they didn't either rescind the letter, nor did they provide any additional information from 2002.
Yeah, I respect their role, and their role is very clear, and I was reading, you know, when county supervisors, you know, formed that advisory committee, but still, I'm looking for a little bit more meat on that, because we have 21 cemeteries in our county, which are designated as a historic. Tomorrow, some other person may come up. And that's why, that's the only reason I'm trying to put, is there a room for tightening in the future if we don't have it today? That's why I was asking that question. Thank you, Josh. Mayor, I think that's all.
Okay, with that, I'm going to ask the appellant to come on up, and the clerk could reset the timer for 10 minutes. I'm going to raise this up. You're good.
Hello, everyone, mayor, vice mayor, and council members. My name is Igor Semenek, and I am representing the Miller Funeral Home team. So I did have a slideshow that I was going to queue up, but I think it's redundant to show that, if you have all seen it, I'm not going to put us through it again. The data is there, and it's accessible to everyone, so I just wanted to go over just about, you know, who we are, why are we here? It's, I think we're going on our second year of, of this process. It's been a lengthy one, it's been emotional, and that's understandable. Miller Funeral Home has been in existence over 150-plus years. It's been only in three families, the Millers, the Clanys, which is Lauren Clany right there, and now the Clanys are together with the Semenek family on carrying on that mantle. I can only speak for myself in this moment, so I'm just going to say, I have been in the industry for over 15 years. 13 of those have been in Folsom, have been a resident of Folsom for that long. About 11 years have been in the Historic District, right on Mormon Street there. I've lived next to the funeral home that whole time, next to Miller Funeral Home. We have been a part of this community. I know the Clany family has been here for a very long time. They only beat me because I'm younger and I'm an immigrant, so that's why they beat me on longevity here, but I have been in many people's homes here. We've served the community, I've met with plenty of family members, and, you know, if this was a point of like, some sort of competition on who can bring more people here, we could have reached out to the thousands of families we've served and asked them to show here on our behalf. But it just, it gets too much, it's been already too much emotion, and I don't know how many of us can sit through hundreds of people doing three minutes long and giving in their input. There has been a panel of experts analyzing the data. We have complied with every regulation that was imposed on us, and will continue to do so. As far as cremation, 10 minutes is not enough to kind of talk about that whole livelihood of what it entails, what it is. I will just mention some things before I forget, is that it's a necessity. Cremation is a form of disposition. It is here, it's been here for thousands of years. We have been managing on facilitating all of Folsom cities, and within about, we serve about a 30-mile radius of, of families from Folsom. Folsom has been growing. The need for cremation has been growing. Quite frankly, I believe most of the commissioners from the Historic District want to use cremation as their final form of disposition. I asked them where they're going to do that, in the city of Folsom that they represent. We don't have one. We don't have a crematory. This isn't necessarily motivated by personal gain. Obviously, this is a positive business decision for us, but over the years, many families have expressed their concerns about us placing a crematory... about us placing a crematory within the city of Folsom. After a lot of research, we determined, well, we already have the cemetery. And I, I guess it just, this, again, speaking for myself, maybe that felt logical that if you can't put a crematory in a cemetery, where can you put one? But that's where we kind of determined that that would be out of sight, out of mind and out of the way. Putting it in the metal shed. And I know plenty of you will disagree, and that's okay. You're entitled to your opinions. But my question is, a city is a lot bigger than just one neighborhood, right? And it's, it's, it kind of compels down to like, asking us to provide a service. Like we saw the police lieutenant here, but remove their equipment, but keep us safe. And go borrow the equipment from Roseville. So we have been fortunate enough to facilitate cremations with our other crematories that we have in Yuba City and Marysville that if you've seen the slideshow. But with COVID and the advancements of what we were all facing, that has become, it's going to become impossible to keep up with the demand. And the city is growing, the demand for cremation continues to grow. And yes, there is a new form of disposition that was finalized called aquamation. And we are looking into that as well. But that's not going to replace cremation in a state where there's a constant fight over water. And aquamation uses a significant amount of water to facilitate that process. Not to say that we, we have looked at that process as well and, but anyways. Trying to be quick about this is, you know, my kids go to school here in Folsom. They go to school with plenty of friends who are the Sikh community, the Hindus and other. I have a couple of neighbors just within my own neighborhood that keep asking me when we're going to have a crematory so they can facilitate their need, their cultural needs. And so we just, we implore you to reconsider the decision, to think about this. And regarding the cemetery's designation or eligibility, we were not talked to about that. We're still looking into that. Why were we on that register without our notification? Why were we even eligible for that? They could not provide necessarily proof that it was designated. I'm still waiting on that. And the reason why we've never done that is because once you become a historic cemetery, there is limitations to what you can do and that's private property. And we still have plenty of burial spots available that people have purchased, that we need to facilitate. And that, you know, it's, it's going to be detrimental to that business itself. And the cemetery needs all the income it can generate so we can pay the water bill for when we mow the lawn, water the lawn. But so I'll just leave it at that. Thank you for giving me your time, for allowing me to speak. So, thank you. Any questions?
Any questions?
I, I have a couple of questions. I, so I was curious about cremations and did a site visit to Green Valley. And, you know, with the questions that I looked at, that came from the concerns of the residents. And to full disclosure and a surprise, I go and I see YK there. So it was interesting to, just to observe and, and to just observe the whole process. And so I, I got the information about just, you know, some of the questions and concerns, air quality being the one that was probably, that came repeatedly in many of these emails. Another one was traffic. And so, you know, in my site visit with Green Valley, they have almost no traffic. Is this something that you also can attest to that traffic will not be an issue? Because that seemed to be another concern that came from residents. So I imagine it's bodies being transported to the cemetery. Is that, is that how it'll work with you as well?
So we, right now, currently, we've been facilitating over 100 burials, graveside services and things like that at the cemetery every year. Traffic has never been a problem. Driving will honestly, it'll be, in a selfish way, a lot more convenient for us because we don't have to drive as much to go to Yuba City or Marysville to facilitate those cremations. And it will be at an at need basis. So there won't be any increase in our kind of traffic. As far as some of the communities that do witness cremation, it's usually just one person. And the rest do like a live video feed. And that's what we anticipate, that's what we do in our other funeral homes, of serving many ethical and cultural families. And that's what we anticipate here. So we don't see any anticipation of more or a significant amount of traffic.
One of the other questions that came up were the hours of operation, cremations and taking place. And so, you know, I was able to observe, you know, the, I mean, in, in full disclosure, we observed a full cremation where they, we even saw, they opened up the, the retort and allowed, allowed us to see a body at the end of a cremation. So the question for you on that one is, what will be your hours of operation for cremations?
Again, most of our, the way that we operate and many places operate, apart from, again, full-time crematories like in Sacramento County that are just distinguished as crematoriums only, which they operate on a 24-hour basis. As far as the conditional use permit is heading, as far as we're limited to for a day or 500 a year. And so in the event of like, the machine, like realistically, even though these numbers are set not to limit the need on our perspective, but every cremation is not the same. It's different because it's just science in the sense of mass and time. So on some days, we will only be able to do one. On some days, we'll only be able to do two. And we just operate on normal business hours.
So that's what his question, normal business hours?
Correct.
More or less.
So the only time we ever facilitate a cremation outside of normal business hours, if a family has a need for it, like they have to specifically request it with a reason, reasonable reason.
Okay, thank you.
Otherwise, it's, it's, it's also a cost factor for us as well on to have staff overtime and things like that.
Okay, thank you. Those are my, those are my questions.
And I actually have one question for you, Igor. One of the letters that came in, that was sitting here tonight that we hadn't seen prior to this meeting, suggested that the cemetery should be full and how long is this going to go on? So my question to you is, and I know that I've attended many, many funeral services at, at some, at Miller in the long time that I've lived in Folsom. And many of those people were not buried in Folsom. So do you have any idea how many of the burials or actual burials take place in Folsom from funeral services that are held at the, at the mortuary?
Well, see, we, we are the only operating in a cemetery in Folsom, so we do.
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the distinction between what happens at the funeral home. How many of those, how many of those funerals end up with someone that's, that's final resting place is at the cemetery here in Folsom versus elsewhere?
Oh, I would say, I would say 20%, that's what I was thinking, about 20%.
So 20% of the people leave Folsom or stay in Folsom?
Well, 20% of the business that we facilitate, so we facilitate or we serve over 800? 800 families now, just out of our Miller Funeral Home location. And I would say on a rough estimate, 20% of those 800 choose burial specifically in Folsom.
Okay.
But all 800 of those hold funerals in our facility in the sense like, some people choose just direct cremation to out of that, which is high. So then you get into other percentages as far as how many funerals, like visitations we hold in the mortuary where people go to eat after Sutter Street and things like that after the funeral. So, but only about.
I wasn't talking about it from a business generation standpoint.
Only about 20% actually end up being interred at Lakeside Memorial Lawn.
Okay.
Others choose just to take them home or choose a separate cemetery.
Okay. And, and the way it works currently is if someone, if, if you guys are providing service to a family and they've chosen cremation, then basically, do they have to go to Yuba City or Marysville to retrieve the remains of their loved one or do you guys facilitate that?
No, no. So we, we aren't, the way we distinguish ourselves in our own industry is that what we call like old funeral directing where our whole team handles the human remains at all times. So we do not subcontract any of the services we provide. And so when all the documentation is done and, you know, the body is ready to be cremated, we then, only at that point do we take it to the facility for the cremation to happen and then bring the urn back and the family picks up the urn from our facility.
Okay. Any other questions?
I do. If this, if the conditional use permit is approved, are you planning to do improvements to the, like the interior of the shed? Or if I wanted to watch my loved one be cremated, am I just going into a metal shed and, and that's it? Or it, it, it doesn't seem that dignified to do it that way.
Most, 99% of all crematories are in metal sheds. Obviously, we were accused of doing things prior to approval. And in the photos, you can see that we did not do a thing and so we left it alone. But yes, we're going to clean it up and possibly paint the interior to make it more appealing, to make it more dignified. As of right now, it's just always been used as a, a storage shed for our utility equipment. But that's where all crematories are placed. They're placed inside garages or sheds. In Sacramento, it's, it's mostly just warehouses, just sheds.
Okay, thank you.
And, and that's what I witnessed today was I wanted to see where it was located. And so from the outside at Green Valley, it's a part of the actual building where services are held. And the crematory was in the back of that building. And so if you looked at it from the outside, it looked like a garage door. It looked like three garage doors and that's where the actual retort is located.
Yes, I've been there. I've been there, yes.
No, and it's, and I've, I've been to services up there as well and I remember thinking.
But it wasn't pretty, like it's not, it's not attractive or pretty. I think, would you say it's, it looks very basic, very plain?
Yes, it's just to facilitate a need.
And, and I, I didn't watch that process as you guys did. But I remember that the first time that I went to a funeral service up there, because I knew that's where the crematorium was. I remember, I remember thinking, wow, this place is like right in the middle of a neighborhood, which I did not expect. I didn't realize there was actually that compact a neighborhood in rescue. I thought everything in rescue is on five acres. Yes, I don't leave Folsom often enough, but I remember being surprised and that there's two, there's an elementary school and a, and a middle school within a couple of blocks of the building.
Across the street.
Yeah.
And there are homes, there are homes that are from where the, for the, the facility is, the homes are right across the street. So I, I took a photo of where the garage door was that crossed the street and it, and it was, it was homes. And there's a elementary school across the street, a middle school walking distance, golf, golf course, golf course to the left, so, yeah.
Good.
Okay.
I have a couple of clarification questions, mayor.
Okay.
Igor, I know you started your opening remarks with emotions, right? The business you took up through your dad or it is parents, it's not that kind of business everyone wants to be. I just want to make this comment. I know on the Folsom South, we have so many great builder friends. And when they complete, complete their project, they give a nice big welcome house key. Everybody is cheering and they're welcoming. Those are the happy moments. But whereas the business you are in, that's not it. Very emotional. Thank you for, you know, starting that word with emotional. I'm sure all our residents feel the same way as well, right? So I want to thank you for being in that and you're consistently saying the service. Yes, it is a business. You are going to make some money to live, but the service is the big one. I just want to call out, thank you. One thing I want to ask, I know during your explanation, you are still saying you don't know why historic commission, crematorium commission, county one has designated your crematorium as a historic. But I read several documents, it was clear from their side. Could you please explain a little bit more on your understanding still?
Well, as far as we are, as far as we know, no one ever approached us about this designation. We have a few theories on why, probably the failure in 2002.
I, no, I, I think, I, I apologize, but I've been around for a while. And I believe that the historic designation or that process had already been started at the time the mausoleums were being brought forward. And I think it's important for everybody to understand that that is not a process that has to be started by the property owner. There are a number of locations in Folsom for historic sites that were nominated by, by random parties. So you don't have to do anything about it and you can't prevent somebody else from doing something about it. There, the same thing applies for, for, with the, the tree ordinance, for designating trees as historic and significant. And the homeowner, if it's on somebody else's property, may not have any say over somebody doing that. The, what was, what's the other location? Is it Station Master's House got, got put on the national register? And that's on property owned by the city and the city had nothing to do with it.
I, I understand, I understand the process.
The Mir House is same thing.
Yeah, I understand the process. I, I, I was in the historic district for a while and was fortunate enough to have like a 1930's home. But as far as the cemetery designation, I understand the eligibility and all that. And if we were to get technical with it, our name is misspelled on their designation.
Yeah.
So.
Obviously, you didn't submit it.
As far as I'm concerned, we're not listed on the registration.
Okay.
It was a joke. But as far as our, our awareness is just that it was a, for eligibility for like a landmark, to become a landmark in the near future. And then so if you look at that coding, you do need the permission of the property owner to become a landmark.
Yeah. So you're still unclear on that one. I know, I was asking the same question.
Correct.
Okay.
We, we'd love, for even ourselves, would love clarification because what does that mean? Do we not use the backhoe anymore? Do we use shovels? Do we remove our sprinkler system or all our modern gear? So we're just unclear ourselves.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if there's no other questions, I'm going to open the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're going to open the public hearing and just a reminder, you will be limited to three minutes. And clerk will read three or four names in advance. So if you could start to make your way down as it's coming up to your turn, that will save us a little bit of time.
Okay, the first speaker will be Laura Alba, then Larry Alba, then Anita Claney and Wendy Schneider. So first one, Laura Alba.
Good evening. I just feel very compelled that I at least need to say, please consider, reconsider your position on this. I too have been here for 30 years. And I have known Miller Funeral Home that entire time and actually a little bit longer. A year and a half ago, we lost our son tragically in Afghanistan. And Miller Funeral Home did an amazing job helping us get our son home. And we buried our son at Lakeside Cemetery. What you're dealing with is a company that, yes, it is, that's how they make their living. But this is a company that is all about dignity. And they love and they care with kindness every single person that walks in that door. By not allowing them to have a cremation. By not allowing them to have a crematorium, you're tying their hands. And you need to start looking, which I'm sure you have, but Folsom looks very different. We have a lot of Sikh and other cultural people here that that is part of their grieving process. And you are tying their hands and not allowing them to provide a service that those people desperately need to do, because when you're in my situation and you've lost a child that's twenty-four years old unexpectedly and tragically, you want the right people to be handling your case. And if for cultural reasons, that means that, you know, having that body cremated is very important, then you are tying their hands from doing that. And let's think about that. It's hypocritical if a lot of people in this audience already know that they themselves are going to be cremated, and they have lived in this city, and yet want Miller Funeral Home to go elsewhere to provide that service. That's not right. We need something here in our city, and it's time to have a crematorium. We already know from the, the research and the data, there's no impact. So I please, I beg you to reconsider. Thank you.
Next speaker is Larry Albaugh.
Okay, thank you.
Then we'll go to Anita Kliney.
And then after Anita will be-
Wendy Schneider.
Thank you. Um, I also would like you to consider reconsidering this. Um, COVID was a rough time for a lot of people, and I can see, I can speak on behalf of family members and people who work in the industry, the wear and tear that it has taken on people emotionally, physically, how it's, how we've had to handle business. I've personally watched that. It has been very difficult to, to handle the business the way we are expected to do it without having what we need to provide the services in our community. It's been very difficult, so I would ask that you would reconsider.
Wendy Schneider, then we'll have Megan McCooler, followed by Terry Sorenson.
Thank you. Well, I'm Wendy Schneider, the funeral lady, says it on my license plate. Um, and I have worked here with Miller Funeral Home for four years. And for the last several months in particular, I've, um, been kind of in charge of Lakeside Memorial Lawn myself as my, my partner retired. But, um, where I've taken families there, the last four years, I've sold properties there. And the last two months, again, specifically all the families that have purchased property, um, at Lakeside, I have worked with. And it's a wonderful company, wonderful neighborhood. I love Folsom. My home is at the far side of Placerville, but I've rented a, a property here in Folsom to be closer to work, to work with the families, to be here and available for them. And I can tell you that the families that I work with want to be cared for in Folsom, want to place their loved ones in Folsom, and want their family members to be in Folsom. My own, I guess, targeted frustration has been with the way that the neighborhoods have protested this. As, um, in particular, working with a family recently that found their four-month-old baby dead that day. And as I'm taking them to the cemetery, they've said, what is a sign there for that says, don't let the dead kill the living? And the mom is additionally devastated by the way the situation's been approached. And so that's been discouraging. That's why I've been eager for a resolution and wanting to care for the families, but also to not have our families accosted as they're in their grief and trying to find their place in Folsom to have peace. So I appreciate your consideration. I'm, I'm here to also just state that this is a wonderful company that cares for families all the way through, and that's all we want to do is to be able to care for them here in Folsom. And I appreciate the time before you, and I hope that you will consider allowing us to be able to do that. Thank you.
Megan Mc- McCooler, and then Terry Sorenson, then we have David Hibbins.
Hello. I bought my house, my house is one, three, four, six Young Woo Circle, twenty-three years ago. And there's about a hundred houses in the, our, our little enclave. We back up to Lake Natoma. Our housings, I paid one eighty for my house, and it's worth over seven hundred now. But you say it's not gonna affect property values? It already has. Already, home sales are falling through because people don't want to buy a house next to a crematorium. So they're not, the housing sales are falling through when they find out this is going on. All of us are loo- gonna lose money on our houses, a lot of money. You add up all the houses, a couple of million dollars. There's only one person that's gonna make money. Why should one person put a crematorium in the historic district next to a fancy neighborhood that backs up to Lake Natoma like ours so that they can make money? And all the rest of the neighborhood, we have to lose money. And I know they say, no, but it's already happened that a house sale has fallen through because they found out there may be a crematorium going in. That's it.
Terry Sorenson, then we'll have David Hibbins and Nancy Oldham after that.
Thank you. Uh, my name's Terry Sorenson, and I reside at twelve sixteen Forest Street, directly opposite the Lakeside Memorial Lawn Cemetery. Just as an aside, there are a lot of nice people in that neighborhood. I sort of had to say that. Okay. I've lived in that location since two thousand and five, so I have some history there. Uh, I've written four letters in opposition to the crematorium proposal in question. The first addressed to the Historic District Commission, and the last three addressed to the council. All four letters focused on the importance of preserving and promoting the historicity of the cemetery and adjacent areas of historic and cultural significance in our city. The first letter focused on the fact that the exact same crematorium proposal was made back in two thousand and three, and though never considered by the Historic District Commission or the city council, was soundly rejected in the city staff report based, in short, on a staff finding that the crematorium, uh, use sought by the applicant would negatively impact the historical character of the existing cemetery and the historical use of the area. The language sounds familiar, it keeps recurring. There's some truth to that. Uh, the second letter I sent out was dated April three. It pointed out that the argument advanced in the recent Historic District Commission staff report that the crematorium was an appropriate accessory use to the existing cemetery was an argument without merit and could not provide the basis, uh, for the cemetery use sought by the applicant. Um, I would request that you take a look at that letter that I wrote of April three. I, I didn't want to go off on something, but it was brought up again, uh, by Josh, that that was, uh, that's, that's how the, that's how we're getting there. We're getting there because the claim is being made, this is an accessory use. It's not an accessory use. An accessory use, as defined by the city in its staff report, is a use that is secondary to the primary use, which in this case would be a cemetery, and cannot exist on its own. Well, they defined themselves right out of an accessory use argument by making that argument. Obviously, uh, a crematorium can exist separate from a cemetery. It is done in several places in this county. Uh, I could actually want to stop right there. I think they argued themselves out of their position. I would request you take a, take a look at my April three letter. Uh, spent a lot of time, a lot of thinking, getting that out. How are we doing time-wise? Not well. Okay.
I'm gonna need you to wrap it up, Terry.
Okay. I'll go right to the fourth letter. Argues that the cup request in question should be denied in light of the provisions of the general plan, the historic preservation master plan, and the Design Development Guidelines relating to the listing, promotion, and preservation of the city's historic and cultural resources. Letter goes on to argue that these-
Terry, Terry, your, your time's up.
Okay, thank you very much for your consideration. Uh, do what's right.
Okay, next up is Dave Hig- Hibbins, and we'll have Nancy Oldham, Sean Gates.
Hi there. I'm Dave Higgins. I live in the preserved neighborhood. Uh, I oppose the crematorium. I've written letters ad nauseam. You're probably pretty aware of my name in there. And like Igor said, this is an emotional issue for all of us. Uh, that's pretty much all I have to say in the interest of time. However, I'd like to clarify if I could add some of the, I believe, Commissioner Rodriguez, you had a question about how the signatures get, uh, acquired from-
Correct. What I wanted to know was if it was Sacramento County, whether they're over eighteen, legit.
A lot of those signatures were petition on my front yard. I had a sign out there. So it was the bicyclists, the people that use that neighborhood would come by and sign it. The petitions that were signed online, a lot of those were all identified by people who read the website. So they had to be within that neighborhood too, to get the website to go online to click that little box on there. So they're basically all regional people, all within Folsom and Roseville and Oak, uh, Orangevale. And those are the people that are using it. And they, and we figured the people that are recreating there, they're the ones who are gonna be breathing the air, enjoying the sights, enjoying the birds, and this, that, and the other. So that's why we figured to get the signatures of the people that are utilizing the area.
Thank you.
That's all I have to say. Thank you, and thank you for your commitment.
Nancy Oldham, then Sean Gates, then Joy Hayes.
Yeah, hi, I'm Nancy Oldham. I've been a Folsom resident for twenty years. And I was, uh, against this project in two thousand and two, and I'm against it again. And first, I want to make a clarification or reminder. Uh, this has to do with the traffic issue and transportation. The initial study states that there won't be any visitors at all at the crematorium during the cremations. It will just be employees only. That's what it says. Because of that, you know, parking is a big issue. There's limited parking on site. We've had crem-, uh, you know, ceremonies before where the overflow goes into the city, into our residential neighborhood. So just for clarification, as far as there, there would, there would be an impact if there were visitors other than the employees at the, uh, wit- to witness the cremation. Second thing I want to state is that, um, I will, I believe that additional, uh, findings for the denial of this, uh, conditional use permit should also be the, uh, zoning and consistency standard. Because this is a industrial use, and it's, it's totally incompatible, incompatible with the existing, uh, open space. And that's a viable, uh, option for an additional, um, finding for a denial. And that's my comments.
Sean Gates, Joy Hayes, then Mary Johnson.
Uh, my name is Sean Gates, and I oppose the crematorium. I'm also speaking on behalf of Tim and Mariko McGary, Dave and Kim Higgins, Kyle and Breann Van- Van Gutton, and my wife Nicole Gates. So this is, you know, a big deal to us. Um, we even retained the environmental law firm of La Zou Drury to review the historic commission's decision and the accompanying mitigated negative declaration. They recommended that the council uphold the decision denying the use permit. The comments also highlight that the mitigated negative declarations discussion of the potential historic impact is inadequate. Because the staff's prior analysis in two thousand and three found historic resource impact from the same proposed project, and other reputable historic organizations identify historic resource impact, there's a fair argument that the project may have significant impact on a unique historic resource, and the council cannot approve the project without first preparing a full environmental impact report. And, uh, just kind of speaking to one of the unique historic resources, the Chungwa Cemetery, I do want to bring that up because it's personal to me. Um, my mom is Chinese and my dad is Caucasian. And, um, you know, it's not just my opinion, that's, that's my heritage, that's who I am. And, you know, I want to make sure that that gets protected. And, you know, at the end of the day, you know, we're all people here, right? And so there's really not much more I can say other than that, but it, it, it means a lot, right? And so, you know, if you look at, and if you read up on the history of that cemetery, it's actually pretty amazing because it's still maintained in the same, you know, the same, um, fashion that it was, you know, a long time ago. So I just want to call that out, right? Like, it's not just about business, it's also personal, right? And we've got people here that live here, and things like this, it impacts a lot of different things. So I just hope you guys consider that. Thanks.
Joy Hayes, Mary Johnson, then Deborah Grassel.
Thank you for your time. Thank you for your service on the commission. Thank you, Mrs. Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to talk. I've written a few letters, emails.
Can you get just a little bit closer to the microphone?
Sure.
Thank you.
I've written letters and emails, and I continue to urge you to vote no uh, for reasons of the air we breathe, as well as the heritage, the long-term health problems that we may not even know about yet, and the fire danger. Uh, specifically, uh, Folsom is made distinctive by nature. We are, we, we don't live in expensive homes by the average cost today. We're very fortunate to live in the neighborhood we live in, and as such, I feel responsibility to be a caregiver to that area. Um, Folsom, Lake Folsom, and Lake Natoma, the American River Bike Trail. Right now, it's green, beautiful, and within a few months, we're going to be back in the full force of the drought. Any possible situation where sparks escape might never happen, but it might, uh, would start forest fires. And we all know that we've been through summers with air that we cannot breathe. We're asked not to leave the house. People have moved from our area because of the forest fire smoke. So to bring in, to, uh, to encourage any vote but no, um, I believe would be, um, harmful to the air we breathe. I would also, uh, point out that the opening slide was a view from our area. It's the crown jewel of this city that is distinctive by nature, and it is the reason that sets Folsom apart from so many other Sacramento suburbs. I urge you to join our neighborhood in preserving everything that's beautiful about our, our parkway, and please, I urge you to vote no on this.
And says Mary Johnson, then Deborah Grassel, then Peter Luciga.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for your time, and thanks for allowing us to speak. My name's Mary Johnson. I've been a resident in that neighborhood unbelievably twenty years now. And it is a neighborhood that we love. I had like this whole thing that I was going to speak, but I really think we need to, I need to address some things. We are absolutely not suggesting that Miller Funeral Home provides any less than stellar service to all their clients. We know that. We've known friends and families to use that, very happy with their service. We also are very cognizant of the fact that our population is growing, and we need a crematorium. This is just not the spot for it. It is such an amazing area, and I hope that all of you have walked the grounds and look at those, um, graves from the eighteen fifties. Also, look at the new area of the Colobarium where they have the niches. They have done an excellent job. But then you look at this metal shed that's going to have a smokestack, which is gonna line up in a few hundred yards to my master bedroom window that I don't really want to keep open when they're burning bodies. You know, there is a personal dislike of having to live next to a place they're gonna be burning bodies. You know, it, it, for lack of a better terminology, there's the ick factor, the creep factor. And I am sorry to not have a better terminology for that. But I'm gonna be in my beautiful backyard that I have spent so much money on. I love my neighborhood, and if you smell something funny, what am I smelling? You know, that is the distasteful aspect of it. I'm probably one of the few people that read all the Helix Report. I do have areas of the air quality report that I take issue with. First off, I'm a retired oncology nurse. How am I doing? And I have taken, I'm- And I have taken, I also worked hospice. I've taken care of patients during the dying process, during the time they die. I know what has been pumped into these people, lifelong drugs that are sequestered and in the tissues. We have medical devices that are implanted, various catheters, multiple joint replacements, and dental work. All of those are vaporized during the cremation process. Yes, they're using the state-of-the-art equipment, but yes, there still can be discharges from it. Secondly, the Helix used the area of Sacramento Executive Airport. That is not the same air quality dynamics as our area. We live up next to Bluffs, we are in the Schultz-Eddy. All of those pollutions collect in our area, and it's compounded by Folsom Boulevard air quality pollution. So we have two major strikes potentially against our neighborhood, Folsom Boulevard and the crematorium.
I'm going to need you to wrap up.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to say, what do I have, seven seconds?
No, that means your eight seconds over.
Okay, thank you. All right, well, thank you so much for your time.
Deborah Grassel, then Peter Luciga, then Helen Walsh, and then Lauren Clary.
Good evening, council members. My name is Deborah Grassel. I live in the Preserve, Lake Natoma Shores housing development. I have been there since the very beginning, since nineteen ninety-seven. And I have to say, I am in love with the history of this region. My mother was the history manager and director for the Folsom History Museum and Historical Society. So just from living with her, I know a tremendous amount about our area. There seems to be some problem with whether or not the Chungwa is actually on the National Register of Historic Places. It is. I have its number, I have the signature of the officer that signed the papers, and I will forward them to you since this project is going to be forwarded, I guess, to the next city council meeting. In addition, the Chungwa Cemetery is on the California Register of Points of Historical Interest. And we have other historical artifacts and sites in our housing development. So we've got a lot going on in our housing development. And I have to say that the environmental work for the crematorium was very poor. I am shocked, really shocked, at the environmental work that was put forward, particularly on the historic resources. So you've gotten a lot of letters and even whole documents forwarded to you in regard to the history and the culture of the area. And I think that, you know, that in our general plan, these places were supposed to be, are supposed to be preserved, restored, and protected. So we don't have standards of guidelines in our zoning laws. So we have to take those principles from the general plan, what the general plan asks as implementation member, implementation goals and objectives. And in regard to following those rules and regulations in making your findings, one of those findings would be the finding that the two thousand and three Historic District Commission made in regard to the health, safety, welfare, and the cultural resources of the region. One of the reasons, one of the reasons that they rejected it. In the recent Historic District Commission findings, they used only one, number B, of A through D in regard to why they were rejecting this project. But this project also qualifies under the other findings that were being made, but they were shortened making those other findings.
Deborah, I need you to wrap up.
... by the city attorney, who said...
Deborah, I need you to wrap up, please.
Okay. I'd like you to deny this project for a lot of different reasons, but for me mainly, the cultural resources are supposed to be protected. Thank you.
Next speaker is Peter Luciga, Helen Walsh, and Lauren, I'm sorry, I can't read it, Clary.
Okay. I'm Peter Luciga, and I won't bore you with the subjects about the package contents. We've all contributed to that package and given you our input on how the lives of the residents and also the historic district will be affected by citing a crematorium in our historic area. I'd like to just suggest a different approach that is a win-win for both parties in the room. I think the Miller Funeral Home people and the owners of the cemetery are, seem really nice people. They provide a genuine service. There is no dispute to the fact that a crematorium would be an economic benefit and a real functional benefit to the city of Folsom and its residents. What I suggest is that the city consider what the city planner and department just recently came up with, that there are industrial sites within Folsom that would be suited for a crematorium location. Let's build a world-class facility, and perhaps the city can consider incentives to make that happen for developers who would like to engage in that process, perhaps by tax incentives or some structured approach to really make this solution work to meet our needs because we just can't bury it and pretend cremations do not rise. What we can recognize that it's not suited for a historical sighting. It doesn't really serve the image of keep distinctive by nature. And let's put it someplace and make it a facility that Folsom can be proud of. Thank you.
Next is Helen Walsh, then Lauren Clary, and then Steve Walsh.
Hello, I'm Helen Walsh, and I live in the Preserve, and I'm opposed to the crematorium. I have to say that, like most people, I don't think, until you're faced with something like this, I hadn't put much thought into crematoriums. But in the last year and a half, I've put way, way, way more thought into it than I ever thought I would. I would just like to say, please, let our neighborhoods speak for the city of Folsom. Because it's not that we're opposed to cremations, we're not opposed to crematoriums. We're opposed to this being near, in the close proximity of our lake, of our neighbors, of... I'm getting nervous, sorry. But I just, it is emotional, and it isn't just that we're trying to stand in the way of any kind of business, that's not what we're doing. I think the clear fact that the EPA does not regulate crematoriums is a concern for me. That's not because they're not pollutants, that's because there was strong lobbying from the funeral industry. I'd like to also remind everybody, we have problems with mercury in our lakes already because of the mining that was done. This is another concern for me because when mercury's vaporized, it goes long distances, it's cumulative, and it's the long-term effects. And just try to find some research out there. I mean, let's let the research speak. There's not a lot of research, therefore, how can you tell me that this is not going to affect me? What Mary brought up about cancer patients and all of the new types of chemotherapies, radioactive, you know, seeds and things that are being used, where's the research for that? Who can tell me that that's not going to affect me? That's not going to affect that worker that just put the body in the oven, and he's not going to take that home. I mean, it's highly regulated in a hospital. You couldn't just walk into a room if they're doing any kind of that type of procedure with radioactive. So I just think that that's something to concern or to consider. I guess, just do a simple research yourself on the internet, and you will find, there's many examples of human errors or fires. It's not like we're just making this up. Things happen, and once it's there, there's nothing we can do about it. It's, you know, San Diego in two thousand and eighteen had human ashes spewed in the smoke because of a human error, they didn't shut the oven. Just look yourself. I mean, there was a fire, you can look recently in Sacramento's, at crematoriums.
I need you to wrap up.
Okay, thank you for consideration.
Next speaker is Lauren Clary, Steve Walsh, then Audrey Semenjak, then Victoria Foster.
Yeah, hi, I'm Lauren Clanny. I was the person who submitted the first proposal in two thousand, early two thousands, for the crematory. And all of this is just born from an ongoing need for people coming in our doors and asking for cremation. And so that is, I've been here for thirty-four years with the funeral home. I've lived here my whole life, so fifty-six years. And, yeah, it's just slowly over time increased, and we have more and more people requesting it. And we felt like, because we see, and we're around the funeral and cremation industry a lot, we've seen where these are placed, at Green Valley, East Lawn, if downtown. It's right in the Fab forties, there are two crematories in there that are closer than our crematories would be to any of the homes here. And this is happening all over, right at Mount Vernon. There's homes right behind it. So we weren't trying to seek something that wasn't already common or wasn't happening. And we own crematories in residential neighborhoods, and we have no conflict with any of those people. We don't have complaints coming from those neighbors saying they are disturbed by it. And of course, we're more comfortable with it because I've been around it my whole life. But the growing need in our community, and we have so many families that we cannot serve because of the fact that they want cremation and they want to witness it in their community, and we cannot provide that service. So that was the whole reason we're doing it. It's not that I'm pushing cremation, it's only to be able to serve the families that are in our community. And that's, we want to try to do that in a way that is respectful. I understand cremation is not something that a lot of people want to talk about, or I understand that they don't want to live next to it. But on the whole, that I've seen in my thirty-four years, if once it's in that shed, they might mentally understand that it's there, but they are not going to experience it. And that has been my experience, and that's been my experience. And we own four crematoriums across California, and we don't have issues. And we only buy the best equipment. So we, there are machines that have been purchased in years past that have caused problems, but the technology is very different, and they do not cause that. Last week, I was in India and saw the public burning places where the families can come. And talk about a difference between that, where they just use wood, it just goes right into the air. And it's like the complete opposite of that. These are the most, and we are very regulated, not only by the Air Quality Board, but by the Cemetery and Funeral Bureau, they will be there anytime, surprise inspections, they have to come, and they will. And if there's anything that is ever wrong with that machine, we will fix it. The last thing I want is to have anything emitted from there that's going to cause anybody any kind of emotional pain. Because that's the whole point. When you drive into that cemetery, you're only driving in there because you have somebody there.
I need you to wrap up.
The traffic is, listen, every time we enter someone, that's more people coming to the cemetery, and there's no regulation on that. So, thank you very much.
Next speaker is Steve Walsh, then Audrey Semenjak, Victoria Foster.
Evening, members of the council. Steve Walsh, I live in the Preserve neighborhood. I did not intend to start this way, but just one point that I thought was important to bring up, that when Y.K. asked Igor to expand on his apparent misunderstanding of whether he is or is not in a historic district, respectfully, Madam Mayor, you interrupted him to clarify when it happened. I find the fact that two years and maybe more on that we've been talking about this, and I know this happened way before we were here, he still doesn't seem to understand or won't admit that he understands that he's in historic district. That is a major part of this argument against putting this crematorium in this neighborhood. The second thing I want to say is, a massive part of my professional life deals with wildfires and dealing with people that are affected by fires. Where do we shelter them, how do we counsel them, what do we do for them? The fact that a fire could come through that area and ignite those tanks scares the hell out of me. And I want to make this point lastly. Igor said a city is more than one neighborhood. A city is all neighborhoods, you all represent all neighborhoods. But I want you to imagine that you live in our neighborhood where something like that could happen. The historical side is important, but this is what I think about, that if a fire comes through there and those tanks explode, I assume you've all seen the video that was sent to you by one or more of our neighbors. It's horrific, and it'll kill people that are in this room. I want you to consider that, and err on the side of caution and vote this down. Thank you.
The next speaker is Audrey Semenjak, then Victoria Foster.
My name is Andre Semenjak.
Andre, I'm sorry.
Andre. It's okay.
Andre, got it.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, thank you for your time, and everyone here. I'm Igor's brother, I promise we're brothers. I know we look nothing alike, but that's my brother, and I got my brother Vic in here. We got into the funeral business with a love for taking care of people within the community. I was born in Ukraine, came here when I was five years old. And my dad brought our team here, a family for a better future, you know? And if there's one thing I know, is when we came into this country, a group of people came in together to take care of us, you know? And getting into the funeral business and the industry, we try to do that same exact thing. When you have grieving families that lost their kids, loved ones, the hardest thing that I've ever done or can do is tell a family, I'm sorry, I can't serve you. Well, why? I don't have the equipment. I can't do that for you right now. Can I see my son going through the crematory? Why do you want to see your son? I want to make sure it's him. I'm sorry. I can't do that. Well, why not? Because I don't have a crematory. So through the years, as we go by and we grow business and so forth, our desire and our goal is to make sure that every single person within the city of Folsom has that choice. And I'm sorry, the industry is growing. I'm the same way, I'm talking quick, I'm sorry, I'm looking at time. I lived in Folsom for fifteen years, I have five kids. Matter of fact, Mrs. Rodriguez, we love your restaurant. And I don't know if you remember my face, I came there when you first opened up, and my kids, and we go there from now on. We love that place, we love this city, the community, we love the people around here, we care for the area. The cemetery was placed before, unfortunately, all the homes that were put next to the cemetery. And I know there was oppositions, but yet those homes were placed. And somehow, we're existing, we're living. You talk about property values, what is the proof? We can't assume property, you're living next to a cemetery. The death exists. It is there. Today, and then I'm going to finish on this. During this whole time, we've kept our mouths shut. We've been harassed, we've been accused with mails, with mailers through our doorstep in the same community I live in. My father, who maintains the cemetery, has verbally been harassed and abused by you-know-who. And if you're in this room, you should be ashamed. And you yell at a man for blowing outside your sidewalk, and you complain to him that, oh, you can't read the sign because you don't understand the language? And it's on video, go on YouTube! And you're going to come in here with peace talks when you yourself are blasting us for, the whole time, we've kept our mouths shut, bite our tongue, serving the fam... And let me tell you something, when time comes, I will gladly serve every single one of you. It doesn't matter, because this is what we're here for. Give us that, help us, serve this community. Give every single person the option to have that disposition. Thank you.
Next speaker is Victoria Foster, then Jennifer Lane, then June Chan.
Hi, I'm Victoria Foster. I'm a resident of Lake Natoma Shores, and I'm also a realtor for over thirty years. My statement tonight is mainly representing the real estate concerns, but also please know that the health concerns are just as much as a bigger concern to me. We all bought in this neighborhood knowing we were next to a couple historic cemeteries, but not a crematorium. Some of my neighbors indicated they would feel compelled to move, not feeling safe about the mercury and other toxins dispersed into the air. Why should anyone have to uproot from their home for the fear of unknown health risks that no one can guarantee? Being next to a crematorium will absolutely be detrimental and a negative impact on our home values and eliminate a large number of buyers, not only for the health concerns, but yes, the ick factor. The real estate mantra today by realtors is disclose, disclose, disclose. The California Association of Realtors has two mandatory disclosure forms that must be included in every sale. One of them is a seller's property disclosure statement. There's seven different paragraphs on this four-page document where a seller in this neighborhood would now have to disclose about this crematorium. In the staff report prepared by the applicants' case study, it pointed... In the staff report prepared by the applicant's case study, it pointed out that there are other crematoriums close to residential homes. Pictures of them are shown next to neglected homes and rundown apartment buildings, and in mixed use and commercial zoning. A couple examples is the chapel of the Twin Cities in Yuba City. It's mixed used and commercial zoning. Homes sold here in the last year averaged $331,000. And it's also, as you can see, they've got cars parked on the front lawn. That's really sweet. Evergreen Memorial in Sacramento, nah, in Sacramento, also is in mixed zoning, and the average sales price is $305,000. These homes are not in a historic district like ours, and where everyone has pride of ownership. The last home sold in our neighborhood on the MLS was $750,000 on Fong Street in September of 2021, during the heat of a buy-in frenzy, a period when homes got multiple offers and sold way above the asking price. But this home received one offer, and only at asking price. Several buyers were turned off by the possibility of living next to a crematorium, and they didn't want to even write an offer. We didn't even have a crematorium in our neighborhood, and already our home values were impacted. Residents love living here in Folsom, and buyers want to come here for the outstanding schools, the recreation, the trails, and both of the lakes. We have an excellent array of restaurants and shopping, and for the family feel of the community, and for the quaint and unique historic Folsom. No buyer has ever came to me in an open house and asked, "How is our crematorium?" They come and they stay for the quality of life.
I need you to, I need you to wrap up, please.
Okay. It's a huge industrious business that needs to be safely in industrial area where it can grow and increase with its demand. And with that in mind, we ask that city council stay with the denial of the historic district. Thank you.
Last two speakers are Jennifer Lane and June Chan.
Jennifer, come on up.
Hi, good evening. I just want to comment as a ten-year planning commissioner, that I personally, as a planning commissioner, would never put a residence neighborhood with industrial and commercial. It just doesn't fit. Steve Wong and I, the city attorney, when I was on the planning commission, we kind of had a, kind of an inside joke going because he grew up in Reno, and I did as well. And we would talk about how Reno is so screwed up with industrial next to commercial, next to residence, and there seems to be no rhyme or reason. And we would, we would just compliment that Folsom is not like that. And here we are. So I, I'm sorry he's not here tonight, because I wanted to, I think the reason, the first reason that this came up was we were making a decision on the lighting at the McDonald's off of Folsom Boulevard. And I'm pretty sure I had to make a condition or, or vote no, that we don't change the lighting, because it would affect across the street where the American River Parkway is. And, you know, this just, this whole thing just doesn't make sense. You know, I don't live in the Preserve. I live on Sibley Street in Natoma, where it's real noisy and loud and lots of traffic. But you don't see me down here talking about that much. Mark, maybe you do. But, you know, I feel for these people, and they love, love, love where they live. And they've hosted Cops Night Out, and, you know, they just really get together well. And I'm sorry this is happening to them, and to all of us in the historic district. So I urge you to vote no. That's about it. Thank you.
The last speaker card that I have is for June Chan.
I'm back again. It's good to be back at the podium. I almost wasn't going to be back, but I am. And if I have a heart attack, Sergeant Bates, my nitroglycerin is in my purse. My name is June Chan. I'm representing the O'Chan family. And my family's lived here for five generations. Before I start, it's the Chan family that owned the Junghua Cemetery. And we're going to do a little dialect lesson, Josh, before we start and do this again.
June, just a reminder, you're only going to have three minutes.
I know. I stopped by to give you an article from this, and it talks about the Chinese spirits, about a Hatai Kotori, internationally known individual, G U O P E I, and I'll use her last name. She was born in Beijing. Ma Zitong tried to eradicate Cantonese. He couldn't do it. She's brought up the fact of ancestral worship. The artist designs clothes for the spiritual soul, the spiritual world. I am urging, well, no, let me suggest, I would like to suggest that you vote no. And mainly because for the O'Chan family, who are Taoist, if you're speaking Cantonese, T A O I S T, and if you're Mandarin, it's Daoist, D A O I S T. And I'm spelling it so that Mrs. Knocca, when she types it out, will have a little easier time. My father was a Taoist. He believed in ancestral worship. And I urge you to, and I suggest, not urge you, I can only suggest that you vote no. And I'm advocating the no, because I represent the O'Chan family. And my family of the Howard Senior, A. Mabel Chan, and if that name is familiar, my brother and I donated our two-thirds share of 917 Sutter Street to the Folsom Historical Society, so the history of the Chinese could be told. I'm objecting to this. I've been here four times, not exactly in front of you four times, but I've, four to five times, I have addressed this, and on behalf of my family, when Loretta Hettinger was planning department, she was supervisors-
June, I need you to wrap up.
Elizabeth Galone and Gail DePardo. The, and because the Junghua Cemetery and the Yonghua Cemetery were of state historical importance, because these gold rushers, the Folsom, the Junghua Cemetery has been there since 1854, and my grandparents' desecrated remains and some other families are buried there. I'm not against-
June, I need you to wrap up.
I'm not against Miller's Funeral Home, because there are 14 to 15 members of my family buried there. My dear brother died on October, at the same time I was in hospital. He came to visit me, and I almost died twice. The point is, is that this is, the ashes is considered defilement and desecration. And Councilman Aquino-
June, I really need you to wrap up.
Thank you, and I deeply apologize. This is not easy for me. I'd be happy to schedule an appointment with you and explain the history of the, our ownership. I thank you, and I apologize, Councilman, Mayor Howe, I, I, I'm sorry. Thank you for your patience.
Thanks, June, no problem. Okay, so we have no other, no other request to speak. The people that are on the line, do we have any there?
I don't have any hands raised, so if anyone would like to speak on this item, please select star three to raise your hand.
Okay, we have no one that appears to want to speak on this. And as I-
Can you tell how many people are on the line? Were people able to join the meeting after the-
Yes. I have, I have four. One is a consultant that I know of because I see his name.
Okay, so as we explained, we're gonna, we're gonna need to continue this to the May 10 council meeting. So we're also gonna wait until we get any additional public comments that may, that may come to us on May 10. We are gonna keep the cards until that next meeting. So if you've already spoken tonight, we would appreciate you not speaking again at the next meeting. And we will also give the appellant the opportunity for making closing remarks up to five minutes at that next meeting on May 10. And so what I need from my colleagues here on the council is a motion to continue this to May 10.
I'll make a motion to continue this one to the May 10 meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Can you call, roll, please?
Councilmembers Rodriguez-
Yes.
Aquino-
Yes.
Chalan Charla-
Yes.
Haslawski-
Yes.
And Howe.
Yes.
So, and with that, we move to City Manager reports.
Thank you, Mayor. In a continued effort to prevent prescription medications from falling into the wrong hands, the Folsom Police Department will take part in the National Prescription Drug Takeback Day event on Saturday, April 30. That's this Saturday. So please bring your unused, unwanted, or expired prescription medications to the Folsom Police Department right next door at 46 Natoma Street from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. on that date. Tomorrow, between, beginning at 10:00 a.m., the Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality Management District invites the community to help celebrate the completed renovation of critical air quality infrastructure with the Folsom Monitoring Station Open House. Get a behind-the-scenes look at high-tech monitoring equipment, and learn more about how the district collects all air quality data that helps protect our public health, especially during wildfire season. The Ninth Annual Community Service Day takes place on Saturday, September 17. If you have an idea for a community service day, the deadline is June 17 to submit your idea for consideration. A variety of sponsorship opportunities are also available to help support this wonderful community event. So you can call 461-6712 or email jthiot@folsom.ca.us. And finally, the city of Folsom is conducting a targeted multifamily and mixed-use housing study to evaluate design density and market feasibility for multifamily and residential mixed-use development along the East Bedwell corridor, at the Glenn Light Rail Station, and in the town center area of the Folsom Plan Area South of 50. Provide your input by completing the Housing Design and Density Study found on our website at www.folsom.ca.us/housingstudy. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, Sarah.
I just have one kind of a request. Justin Raffel and I met Bill Anderson out at the superintendent's house on the Y property the other day to take a look in the inside. As was mentioned tonight, that is on the National Historic Registry. It is in desperate need of repair and renovation to get it back to its kind of original state. And I know last year, Mike, when you were mayor, you made a request, which was approved, that the city hire a consultant to assess the depot building.
Yep.
And that, that work has not been done yet. I would like to propose, if there is kind of general agreement, that we bring back an item at a future meeting and see if we can expand the scope of that consultant agreement to include the superintendent's house, with the idea being, the reason I had Justin Raffel out there was because we think that, that that structure could be part of a multi-year Community Service Day project with the help of the Rotary Club and stuff. But it would be very helpful to have a professional weigh in on what the status is, and, and kind of help us figure out the stages. What would we do first? So if there's, you know, some general interest in that, I would ask the city manager to bring back that at a future date, and that we use some of that ARPA money to expand the, the scope of that.
Councilmember Aquino, we did prepare the contract to allow for that type of expansion of scope. Right now, it's under my signing authority as city manager, and I can take a look to see if that would bump it to a level that it needs to come to the city council. But if there's generally consensus, I'm happy to add that to the scope.
Okay.
I'll second the request, for whatever it's worth.
Do I have three nods of heads? It looks like-
Yeah, I have, I have no problem in bringing that back.
Thank you.
Nothing else, Sarah?
No.
Mike?
Just two quick things. We had our full board meeting of SECOG on Thursday last week, and the two points of interest that came up was that the full board approved the regional trail transportation network planning strategy, I guess is best I could describe it, which has multiple goals, but it's to try and make the wonderful thing that we have access to here in Folsom more of a regional amenity across all communities. So interconnecting, interconnecting with both on the road or adjacent to the road and off-road, hike, bike, and other alternative vehicle trail systems. So, so that, that was approved by the full board. And then the second thing was that we, the board modified some of the funding application periods to try and give opportunities for cities like Folsom to apply for match funding that will sync up with the various pieces of federal funding that are coming down the road for transportation programs. Because normally, there's a season to that, and this funding is coming kind of asynchronous to that. So there'll be opportunities to seek match funding at odd times, and starting, I think, this week for the most current program. So heads up, Mark. And that's all. Thank you.
YK?
My name is Josh. Thank you so much. And Siri, thank you so much for providing all the guidance and inputs. You know, today's agenda topic is, it's a great one, and we have so many people, and very tense as well. Pam, thank you for guiding your team, and they are very helpful, all the information they are providing. And in addition, you know, we love to see residents, and yes, you have to come and express your hard feelings or happy feelings, both. And applicant, thank you for holding it, and hopefully we will wait. I sincerely want to thank, starting with my staff, to the residents, to the applicant. That's all for this evening, and good night, Folsom.
Rosario.
So as I mentioned in the last meeting, that I, I'm on the subcommittee for the hiring of the new executive director for STA. And so we met, the position's been posted, and hopefully, within a couple of months, there'll be someone hired. And also, you know, I had the opportunity this year to go, and excited about it, to go to cap to cap. And it was one of those things where I didn't quite sure know what I was getting into, but it is a really big deal as I started to understand the, the trip a little better. So that takes place from this Saturday till the following Wednesday. And also for all you individuals that like concerts in the park, the historic district will have spring concerts every Sunday throughout the month of May at 1:00 at the Zittle Amphitheater. And that is it.
Just a reminder for everybody to slow down. Stop signs applied to you, red lights applied to you. I wasn't, didn't go very many places today, but I don't know, three people running red lights, turning left on, on lights when there's cars coming in the other direction. I just, I don't get it. So just please slow down, pretend that, you know, your family's in the car that's about, about to get hit, and drive that way. Not much going on. There was some, there was recent issues at RT that had to do with potential housing of homeless folks in underutilized parking, parking lots that are owned by RT. I think that whole proposal is kind of falling by the wayside, because the city of Sacramento had initially said that they were going to provide police services, and then said, "Oops, we're not going to do that." So I don't know that any of that's going to happen. I don't know that it wouldn't have affected anybody in Folsom. This was Roseville Road and other parts of Sacramento, nowhere, nowhere near us. Not much else going on in terms of regional SAN. Our, the rail, the Placerville Rail JPA meeting has been moved by a couple of weeks. It's like May 16 now, I think, which is, that's going to be on a Monday morning. In fact, I need to talk to you about that. Which is, that's going to be on a Monday morning. Um, in fact, I need to talk to you about that. And other than that, I hope everybody had a wonderful Easter and that the kids all had a, a great week off and that everybody, everybody's back in school and keeping our fingers crossed that it rains again one more time before, before it gets real hot. And with that, we are adjourned at nine sixteen.